Okay, we have a quorum.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm trying to get my stuff pulled up here.
Give me just a second because I'm gonna project the packet. Jeremy sent me some pictures, so I'm just trying to make sure that they're in the packet. I apologize.
Let me know when you're ready.
There's just the site plan and the agenda packet, Rachel. So if you've got something else.
He emailed a bunch of photographs. He like emailed a bunch of photographs kind of last minute.
We can do the minutes.
Yeah.
Yes, you can. Yes. Okay, so let's go ahead and move on to our first item while Rachel's working. We can, we have to review and approve minutes from January 5th, 2021, and February 2nd, 2021. Unless there are any additions, corrections to those minutes, I will entertain a motion. Michelle, do we need to do this? Can we do those together or do they need to be done separately?
You can do them together.
Perfect.
Okay, this is Commissioner Clements. I move that we approve the minutes from January 5th and February 2nd.
This Commissioner Tunnel, I second that.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to approve minutes from January 5th and February 2nd, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Okay, I think we can go ahead.
Okay. So we can move on to our preliminary development items. So we have one pre-application at 190 Cron Lane. Jeremy Sands for Black Bear RV Park. Are you with us?
Yes. I'm still trying to get logged into the Teams meeting, but we can go ahead.
Okay, you can just sort of walk us through, tell us what you're planning. We do have our packet material in front of us also, so we're able to see.
Yeah, right now at Black Bear RV Park, there's approximately six and a half acres with no garage, no shop, no no type of covered storage for vehicles or equipment. So I would like to build a 45 by 58 foot shop on the property. That's kind of a short-term solution. I put in two shipping containers just to store some tools and equipment necessary to operate the park. Since buying the park, we've actually sold our, got rid of our house in Boise and we now live here at the park onsite full-time. So more important than ever to get some type of garage and storage for both the business and for personal use. Like I said, since there is a main building with a house on the second level, but there is no garage or covered parking.
Okay, that's pretty straightforward. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Okay, it sounds like.
Let me show the shop picture. Let me make sure everything's good with that.
Rachel, Commissioner Lyons had a request.
Yeah, she does. Yeah, just scroll through the shop design, it's fine.
So that's the entirety of the plans ending with that.
Are there windows on that building?
I'm sorry, what?
Can you hit that?
Are there windows on the building? It looks like it's just all, is it all metal?
Yeah, it's a, yeah, steel, titanium steel structures. It's just a steel, steel storage building.
So are there windows?
No.
So you're going to have four blank walls?
Sorry, what was that?
So you're proposing to have four blank walls?
Well, the front of the shop would have three three roll-up or three like garage-style doors. And then the left, if you're looking at the front of the storage building, the left side has the man door on the left side. And the property is sloped and the cutouts where the current shipping containers are, there's a four-foot retaining wall on the backside. So the shop would come up close to the retaining wall. So all of the wall wouldn't be exposed. And the sidewalls as well, basically from the front of where the shop would sit is ground zero. And then it tapers. Basically, the dirt or the grade would increase to four feet to the back of the shop.
And what like finishes colors and are you planning like a Wayne's Code or is it just going to be all sort of one sort of cited color?
Yeah, right now it's trimmed out in dark brown. I sent some photos earlier today of the main building that is onsite. And it's kind of a, they call it like a sand or a light brown color for the main siding. And then the whole building is trimmed out in dark brown with a red metal roof. So the building, it's almost a perfect match to the other building onsite.
Okay.
I have a question for Michelle or for Rachel. Does this building have to meet the standards of CINICRAU review with regard to blank walls?
So this building is, that's something that I think we're gonna need to look into. It's a CUP requirement. The question is, does the design review standards apply? And definitely the code requirements apply.
Okay, I believe that's what Commissioner Cron was trying to get to as far as
Yeah.
the question if it met that criterion.
And we can get the development standards and the requirements to the applicant prior to them making an application.
Okay, thank you.
Somebody had brought up the blank walls issue and so I did read some of that. I do have some questions. I have a feeling you're gonna send me the, because I did dig through the city website and read through it along with some other information that was sent to me. But I have some questions. On the blank wall, it seems like most of the code is geared towards possibly a business near pedestrian traffic with sidewalks where pedestrians are not walking past a large blank wall but have large windows to see into the business. Whereas I think this is kind of a different application where it's set off from a side road and it's more than 100 feet into the interior of the property surrounded by other objects and trees where it may not, it's not directly clearly visible or at least the whole building clearly visible from the road. And, you know, large windows with pedestrians peeking into a secure storage facility is not really ideal. I would rather nobody be able to look into a storage facility and see what they could or could not steal. So I do have some security concerns about putting large windows in a secure steel building. So I guess, all right, back to my quick question is, yeah, maybe we all have to do a little research and find out if that does apply to what I'm trying to do here and my location and proximity to a road.
And Jeremy, is the building, it looks like it's visible though to your camp sites, your RV sites?
Some of them, I would say 20%, 15, 20% of the sites would be able to see this building. Because it sits behind the main building and most of the park is down below. But again, pedestrian traffic looking in is not a good thing. And if there was other options, you know, such as artwork, happy to put some iron bear sculptures. You know, I'd like to know what my options are. I understand the code and what you're trying to avoid. And we're all on the same page if there was other things I could do to break up a large blank wall. Maybe some artwork and some windows, if that would be acceptable. Or possibly put some smaller windows up high that nobody could look into but break up the wall.
Okay, yeah, I think since this is a pre-application, obviously there's still some sort of details to get worked out. At this point, Commissioners, do you have any other feedback or questions for Mr. Sands? So that when he is able to come back for his full application, he's kind of had a chance to address any concerns you have at this point.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Tunnel. A lot of times we'll have the site plan. We'll have some photographs that we can gauge the size of buildings, where they're located, those kinds of things. And if it's possible to do that, a lot of times they'll actually use Adobe Illustrator and superimpose the building onto the exact location that it's going to be built. And that helps us determine, you know, whether or not we feel that the design review issues are something that we look into further or if everything looks fine. It just makes it easier for us. So if that's a possibility, I'd like to suggest you consider doing that.
Okay, yeah, I did request some colored renderings of the building. So I'm still waiting on those. I hope to have those this week. And then, yeah, I'm happy to look into options. I'm somewhat familiar with Illustrator and some of the Adobe products. So I'll definitely look into that and see what I can do.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Hey Jeremy, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Okay, on to old business. So starting with CP 2003 and Design Review 2046 at 901 Second Street. Cash Design and Mr. William Siffer. We, as a commission, requested some information or call to sort of give us a better sense of what this project is going to look like. So there is some information in the packet, but it sounds like the applicant has maybe some information to present before us this evening, so.
So Madam Chair, this is Diane. I'm the pitch hitter for Mc Morgan over the next couple of months. So just a little bit of setup. Yes, you did continue to look at three major issues. One was the structural integrity and the glare impacts from the solar panels. The second was the height and the context of that height in relationship to other surrounding properties. The third was the issue of the solar panel height and how that's treated by the code and how that's been the practice of the city in terms of allowing for those. And then the fourth was a question about the PLR WSD's approval for sewer capacity. So there is a letter that we did receive on the 28th of February from them that indicated they had run a model and that the sewer does have capacity with some interim pump improvements to handle the project. On the issue of the curtains, let me just, I'll refer to the code a little bit on that and then I'll hand it over to Jeff and he could talk about the height and the solar panels a little bit more. There's been some additional analysis generated and he's got some additional sketches for you to look at. But we have, if you look at the requirements for height, there is exceptions in the definition for the height limitations that are in the code, which allow for things like chimneys and projections and cupolas. And those are generally in codes considered are curtainses. And most codes have exceptions for those kinds of things, especially for chimneys that need to be at least above the roof line from a safety standpoint. And in the past, Michelle has indicated to me that solar panels have fallen into that category and exceptions from the height limitations have been allowed for those. They've been treated just like those other curtainses. So that I think answers the couple of questions that were directed towards staff. So I would just, unless there are questions of me, I just pass it on to Jeff then to continue on.
Thanks Diane. Jeff, are you with us?
I am, yes.
Okay, welcome. Go right ahead.
If you, I do have my hand raised so I can share my screen.
Let me just unshare. Okay, I think I stopped sharing. Can you, is the packet gone?
Yeah, so I think Jeff just needs to share now his screen.
Okay. All right. Can everybody see that?
Not yet.
Rachel, so I have the computer I'm talking on and then there's a different computer that has its hand raised.
Yeah, so in that Teams meeting window, the upper right-hand corner, it's actually next to the leave button. It looks like a square with an arrow through it. And if you click on that and then select which monitor or window you want it to be.
See if that's gonna work. Looks like it might have started sharing.
There we go.
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. Jeff Hatch with Hatch's Design and Architecture. Our address is 200 West 36th Street, Boise, Idaho, 83714. Wanted to thank you again for your consideration of our application for conditional use and design review for this mixed-use development downtown. Again, just for context, for the general public more, but we're on Park and Second Street, kind of kitty-corner to City Hall. And in regards to our parking, currently from our neighborhood meeting, we are 10x the parking that's required for this property. And I'll skip ahead to the context that we're discussing. So we went back and looked at our structural engineering and discussed with our structural engineer about the height of the building and concerns. Originally, we had presented last month at 44 feet for the structure. And previously, that was at 50 feet. And so we were able to lower that an additional 12 inches of the height of the structure to 43 feet and an additional foot of height out of the PV system. So the overall height to the PV system or the solar panel system went from 54 feet to 52 feet. And the height of the structure went from 44 feet to 43 feet as proposed. And additionally, we did go ahead and do the requested concept rendering. And for context, we did go ahead and generate a animation of the downtown so we could get a feel of how this fits into that context. And again, as previously discussed, as you move closer to the lake, the terrain diminishes in height. And so some of the previous concerns from Alpine Village were in regards to having a structure of this height closer to the lake. We actually sit about 20 to 22 feet lower than the vantage point of Alpine Village at this location. With that, we have two animations. The first one is a contextual, almost kind of that drone footage that you had requested. And then we went a step further and actually showed, you know, kind of a pan approximately from Alpine Village showing comparison of the two vantage views. So for starters, this is the more drone footage type 3D animation. I gotta share it different. I guess it makes me transition to the other application. So in doing the study, we noticed the three-story that sits a little closer to downtown and the US Bank Building in particular were two points of reference that were fairly noticeable as far as height comparisons as well as the commercial three-story that's adjacent to us. Part of that's because those are gabled structures that are comparable in height to the flat context person that we have in this project. And then I'll pay the other animation should just transition over, I believe. Yes, okay. So here we have an animation of the view of the lake. You can see that three-story structure. You can see the US Bank Building. So a little jerky, let's see if we can back up. So this is the before. We have the three-story building for context previously mentioned, the US Bank Building, that three-story structure. And then the comparison of the amount that this structure obstructs of the view, amount of the obstruction of the US Bank to that view of the lake and then our structure. It's, in our opinion, is relatively minimal. So part of the question that the commission had for us was in regards to the solar panels and so I wanted to speak in greater context to that. We did consult with Alt Energy, which is a photovoltaic company that's also doing bi-facial panels to the structure that we're proposing. And so the provided photo that we sent up for the staff shows a very similar structure to what we would be proposing in context. And I think the most powerful part of this photo is that you can see that those panels are basically flat with just a slight slope, just to shed rain. So the intent with that is that our snow melt system is melting that, but in the wintertime, the bi-facial nature of the panels collects power off of the underside. Then summertime, it will collect off of both, you know, the part that faces the sky as well as the underside. And so since they're basically horizontal in nature, you would have very minimal tendency for any type of glare in this case. The second email that we provided to staff also speaks to the fact that the intent of solar panels are to absorb light and not to reflect them. And so the issue of glare is minimalized by the intended use and the actual active nature of the solar panel. They do make a couple of different coatings that can be provided as an anti-reflective surface as well. If that is something the commission deems necessary. But in the way that we are orienting these, both from a height standpoint, sensitivity of minimizing that height, keeping it as flat and as low a profile as possible, as well as sensitivity to the neighbors, minimizing that on a flat surface versus something that's pitched at a 30 or 26 degrees to the south would have a tendency to cause a greater level of concern for glare. We've really tried to anticipate eliminating those concerns. So with that, if you will stand for any questions or any follow-up or if you need us to play one of those animations, again, we can certainly do that as well.
Jeff, this is Commissioner Lyons. When you had that before and after kind of somewhat aerial-type view, what altitude was that being considered from?
In working with our animator, that was approximately at the same height of the third floor of Alpine Village. At approximately the same location as Alpine Village.
So this is Commissioner Tunnel. Could you, could you review the parking issue again as to the required number and what you're actually providing and just kind of give us a synopsis of that?
Yeah, Commissioner, as a recap, in our proposed site location, we are not required to provide any parking whatsoever in this zone. From our neighborhood meeting, we found that it was prudent and relevant to this application to provide onsite parking for all of the proposed permanent residents of this structure. In addition, in working with the Public Works and City Engineer, In addition, in working with the Public Works and city engineer, we were able to achieve some additional parking spaces to provide ten times the required parking that is required for this proposed application.
So are you providing ten spaces?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Tunnel again. In reviewing the materials, there was a comment, I think by the city engineers. You had access to a gas supply. And the comment was that, you know, we don't have any natural gas in McCall. So how did you find to resolve that?
In working with our civil engineer and the city engineer had requested that we provide a schematic for the utility layout for this site. And so in doing so, we proposed a range of amenities in those utilities. In talking further with the city engineer and coordination with our civil engineer, we will not be able to have gas to this site. So the heating and cooling and amenities proposed will be ran off of electric power.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, sorry for the late entry in here, Fallon. A question with regard to the parking for the hostel guests. Is that still all street-side and whatever arrangement you'd have with neighboring retail?
Correct, yeah. As previously mentioned, we have a range of public parking spaces that will work on a seasonal basis. And then in addition to that, we are actively discussing with a range of neighbors about a more permanent arrangement or a portion of the season that is not eligible for public parking.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a public hearing opened from our last meeting. Diane, do you have anything you'd like to add at this point before we?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Just a couple of comments. One is in regard to parking. Staff feels it's important to remember that the comprehensive plan direction for the CBD is to create a mixed-use pedestrian environment area. And in order to do that, there's got to be a balancing act with parking. We know that will improve as we go through time. In addition, as you know, the city's invested a substantial amount in improvements in the downtown to try to stimulate, set the table, if you will, for that pedestrian environment with the wider sidewalk amenities and such. So this is a work in progress. And it's intended to create that context for the higher-density, mixed-use, less auto-dependent development such as this proposed project. The other just comment was we had one additional email from Public Works regarding some further direction to the applicant in terms of their final design work and what they would expect to be included in that. So that was one other communication in addition to the two letters that Mr. Hatch already related to from Alton Energy.
We did have an opportunity to review that letter from Nathan Stewart and found that to be agreeable. We also ran that by our civil engineer and he didn't have any concerns with those additional conditions.
Okay, with that, I will go ahead and... We can continue to take comment if there is any correct, public hearing-wise.
Yeah, this is a scheduled public hearing, and I think you continued it. So yeah, you can go ahead and open the public hearing. I know that there's at least one person here who would like to speak.
Okay, so we are going to move on to the public hearing, which has been continued from our last meeting. So anyone who would like to speak, I think it might be simplest if there is someone present at Legion Hall who would like to do so. You want to come up to the podium and just state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Pat Blanchard. I live at Alpine Village, North Third Street. And I was unable to attend the last meeting on February the 2nd because I had a family member die that day. And so I submitted a letter and I asked that if he read it to the record, and it sounds as though it was. And so I just, I have to comment on the... I have to call it a cartoon that was presented from the Hatch Design Architectures in terms of what the view looks like from Alpine Village, the before and after. There is no resemblance to reality between either the before or the after picture. I mean, the before doesn't look like what we can see, and the after doesn't look like what we will be able to not see. And so it just completely has no credibility at all. I could do something that will show you more, and I submit the photograph. But anyway, that, it has no bearing on this question because it does not reflect the reality of this development as it is proposed. And I'd like to say those solar panels are, you know, while they extend above the fifty-foot height requirement or limitation, by just a small margin, it's not the same thing as an aerial that you can sort of see past. I mean, they're relatively solid. And it is far different than, I think, what was intended in allowing an exemption to the height limitation. And then going back to the renderings that were presented, you can see how out of proportion this building is, everything that is around it. And if you have in a residential area or any place, if you have setbacks or anything that you're trying to have, maintain some conformity to the neighborhood or to the business district or whatever, this building would do that. It's a sore thumb sticking out. And then I would also, and I don't know whose staff here versus commissioners.
Commissioner.
All right, but in my conversations that I've had with staff, I have felt that they have worked hard to dig around and find those reasons that they can support this development and that they have ignored the reasons that they should not. And I think that in terms of impairment of the view, the 2018 standards that were adopted in terms of preservation of the view corridor have been completely ignored if this project gets approved the way it is proposed. And then also just the consistency of, you know, conformity to what's already there. This building does not conform to what is already there. And I think the parking is a huge issue. He says that they've done ten times more than is required. Mr., I don't know, it's Mr. Hatch, whoever it is speaking for the architect, for the development. When he said they've done ten times more than is required, I presume that's because of the urban renewal exemption, or whatever you call it, to not have parking required or to have that forbidden to some extent. I think the city has already given away far more parking than is available. And that if you force the parking for the hostel residents onto the street in particular, you're in the wintertime, I don't know how the streets would be cleared. And I raised that last night to the planning department, and they told me that the maintenance people would just have to cope. And, you know, that, I mean, I can't believe that that's the attitude that, you know, just screw the snow renewal people because we're going to approve this so we can collect more property taxes. So in any case, we are strongly opposed to the height, to the lack of parking, and to the lack of conformity to what's around this building. And I will continue to argue this till I'm not able to legalize anymore. Thank you.
Would you like to speak at all? Fallon, it looks like we have another.
Just name an address for the record, please.
Craig Everly, we have two homes, 220 and 222 Railroad Avenue. Just, we can see the lake from our house. I can see my lake, the lake from standing on the street at 220 Railroad Avenue without gaining elevation whatsoever. So right now, we have a view. This building would completely block it. So we're just against it, but we were never notified of this project. And we have two homes that's just right here. I can hit my house with a rock almost from where I'm standing. So that's quite upsetting in itself. But back when the height limits were initiated, there was a strong, strong support in the community of McCall, opposed to fifty-foot buildings. And they were allowed, it was my understanding, outside of the CBD. And I don't know what happened because a lot of people fought very, very hard not to have fifty-foot buildings, period. Myself and my wife included. And to have this proposed in this location is, to me, just ridiculous. Like she said, it's a sore thumb. It does not conform to the rest of the buildings. They're all two-story buildings, pretty much. It just sticks up, and then the solar panels going above fifty feet, that's a solid structure from, especially from their vantage at Alpine Village. They'll be looking at that as a solid structure, so it might as well be fifty-three feet tall, which is beyond the height limit. Once again, we were never notified of this. We would have been, you know, fighting it before or asking more questions. And I don't understand why we never got notification.
Is it supposed to be like three hundred feet or something? And so were you notified?
No, I caught it. I don't know.
Yeah, so at any rate, I mean, I was amongst, and my wife were amongst a lot of people who fought the fifty-foot height limit to begin with, and I'm not sure what happened. It was my understanding that the height limit was thirty-five feet within the CBD, without a CUP. And I don't know what happened, or maybe I was just, didn't realize it, unless something changed in the years since that happened. So I would like to ask you that question, actually, if anybody knows the answer to that. What happened with the thirty-five-foot limit within the CBD?
So rather than have like a conversation during the public hearing, we noted your question, and we can address it sort of on the back end of your comment, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I'm just curious, because we fought very, very hard against the fifty-foot height limit, period. And it happened, you know, because they wanted to put a hotel on the lake downtown. And amongst other things, we just didn't want it. So that was, you know, a lot of people, not just myself, a lot of people fought that height limit. And this building being proposed is just an albatross. I mean, it's a big honking thing sticking up out of nowhere. And I don't, I just don't agree with the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else there in person who would like to comment?
Yes, can you hear me? I'm on the phone.
Oh, yes, okay, so we'll move to the phone. Yeah, just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Brian Ward. My physical address is 1245 Herrick Street. But I am the owner of Crusty's Pizza at 214 Lenora Street, so just right around the corner. The way I view this, for me as a business owner, is something that would be amazing for us. I mean, I think a lot of people are very familiar with the live music that we've been able to hold here in the past and definitely looking to for the future as well. And this type of building, you know, we're starting to see these types of buildings come up in McCall. And I think that's a real good progression for our city and the way that we're moving forward with green homes. And the solar idea, I think, is an amazing thing as well. With the, you know, when we get really busy, especially as more people are coming up, more homes are being bought, you know, with the lack of rentals, hotels, especially on busy weekends, you know, this is going to push people more towards this area of town, which we're trying to really progress. And so for the potential of me being able to have more business and have people brought in and have something for them to do as well is a real benefit for my business, for my employees, and for the community. We don't really have anything really like this in town. And so we have a lot of people that are kind of passing through, and they don't always have the ability of a place to stay. And if they do, they're, you know, maybe going outside of town or doing something a little bit different. And we're kind of losing that little bit of a demographic here. And that is something that I highly support. And I would love to see be a part of this area, especially as we grow and as we, you know, we're looking, you know, we've done improvements on the streets. And as far as like the lack of parking goes, you know, we really haven't seen a big difference on that. At first, with a couple of the spots removed, you know, I thought that might be an issue. But for our business, that has not been an issue. And with all the COVID things that have been going on, we've gone to takeout only. And so the more people that we can have downtown in this area will be more beneficial for our business. And so I am 100% behind this, you know, especially just being right there. I can step outside of my back door and look right over at it. And I would love to see something like this come to our area.
Thank you, Brian. Is there anyone else on the line who would like to speak? And Michelle, can you remind me, is it star six or pound six?
It's star six.
Star six, so if you're on the phone, you have to unmute yourself. It's star six, and it can, there's a little delay sometimes. So just hit star six if you would like to speak. Okay, I'm not hearing anybody, so I think we'll move ahead. And Jeff Hatch, do you want to address any comments made during some of the public comments? Or do you feel like you've sort of presented what you'd like to?
Commissioner Faraday, I did have a couple of comments for closing statement. There was a mention of the validity of our animation, and so I just wanted to speak to that. Due to the potentially contentious nature of public hearings and animations being something that are three-dimensional, we actually ventured to get the animation of downtown McCall from a credible source. This was the landscape architect that did the streetscapes for downtown. So none of the modeling of the buildings, the sites, context was done by my office. It was done by a third-party unbiased consultant landscape company. In addition, the animation itself was developed by a separate consultant, which we did specifically so that we were only providing a three-dimensional model of our proposed project. The balance of it was generated by third-party agencies to maintain that unbiased nature. And so I feel that this is a very credible representation. And we've taken some extra steps to make sure that we could justify that. So I just wanted to stipulate that for the record.
Thank you. And Diane, would you or Michelle want to address the sort of why we're looking at a fifty-foot sort of more? we're looking at a 50-foot sort of more rather than that 35-foot? That sort of concern that was brought up?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, sure. So when the code was adopted in 2006, the height limit for the central business district, which the, this is the area that this project is located in, is 35 feet. However, if you're not on a scenic route, you're able to apply for a conditional use permit to go up to 50 feet. So that's what this application is about. So what the commission really needs to decide today is looking at the criteria of the conditional use permit. Is it a valid request, you know, based on those conditions? I will say projects like Alpine Village in the past use the same process to go above the 35-foot height limit. So there's other examples of this in town. And the 50-foot setback, or sorry, the 50-foot height applies to both the central business district and the CC zone.
Okay, thank you.
That's my question.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, I would like some feedback about where, what you're feeling after some new material, seeing some new material, having some questions answered.
This is Commissioner Lyons. I actually got several items here. I guess first, I was hoping to have a little bit different site renditions from the applicant. I mean, what he got was better than what we had, but I was hoping a little bit more there. I would have to agree, I've been into the Alpine Village building many times. And that does not appear to be the view that I would, that I have seen from that building personally. Now, going from there, I've got a list, basically. So if we go by our city design guidelines, on page six, the guidelines, and bear with me, but I got a lot here. The building scale for developments in McCall downtown area along with Highway 55 should relate to the pedestrian, should be in scale with the surrounding businesses and residences, should not in general exceed a half a block of frontage. Building height and footprint should be harmonious with the nearby buildings and natural features. I would suggest that that does not fit with that guideline. Plan development should be in scale with surrounding businesses and residences. It clearly does not. This one, I'm not sure if it quite makes sense with the storefront. But again, the height of the storefront should align with the heights of the existing and adjacent existing storefronts. It doesn't do that, in my opinion, at all. On page 10, guideline two, adjacent building uses, new construction should be compatible with existing adjacent buildings and uses. I don't know if it's really compatible. The building to the east, if they ever did want to do anything solar there, it's going to be in their shadow. I know there's other areas that have effects with buildings and the shadows that the buildings create. And it would affect other buildings. So that's something to take into consideration. There were some items, well, within our report, that on the features for the height, and this was identified by staff, skylights and solar panels must be designed to fit flush with the roof's surface. And consider, consider the effects of, considering the effects of the snow. I have submitted for the, I don't know if we have it online, but at Hotel McCall, which my office is located, they installed solar panels on basically what was their pool room. Every year, I don't know, Rachel, do you have that picture?
I've got it, does she let me?
Actually.
But every year, there is four to six feet of snow on these panels.
Just one sec.
Oh, there you go. So you can see where I have marked the X's were solar panels that actually have more of an angle than what is proposed on the roof. So I have several concerns there. First, these solar panels are attached to the roof and, you know, directly to the roof, as the guidelines. But as you can see, they get covered in snow, even with a slope to it. These panels have been crushed at least two times, if not three, replaced multiple times. This last summer, David Carey has actually removed them permanently because they do not work and just crushed. Now, in the design that the applicant has, they're flat. So they're clearly going to get snow piled on them. They don't have the structure underneath that they, potentially, if they break, they could come through that. And now you have a building that's going to have four to six feet of snow on top of that. So again, you're going to be at 58, who knows how many feet high. They don't generate enough heat to melt the snow because you're going to get the snow at night when it's cold and once that ice is on there, it's over. And so I just feel that those, you know, for one, they're not attached directly to the roof. As stated, they're going to have issues with the snow. The, with the weight of the snow on the ones, as shown and proposed, could, in my opinion, break and potentially fall through. It's going to create that building height much higher than what it will be for at least four months of the year. And I feel, and we can get to items on the conditional use permit later once everybody has a chance to speak. But I just feel that there's multiple issues with the heights concerning this building. A big part of it is the, the extra 10 feet or so of the, the solar panels that I believe they will have nothing but problems with. Because if they have people underneath them, I think there could be, you know, with the weight of that, you cannot get up on those solar panels and shovel it off. You're not going to walk on them. So I don't know how they would remove the snow other than just leave it up there. And at a certain point, that weight, you know, it could be dangerous to break through and who knows what. We, I don't, in my opinion, can't allow something that's going to potentially harm anybody. That is all I have for now. We'll have some more discussion regarding the conditional use permit criteria after we all talk more. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I, I want to get everybody's input, but I do think, I want to get Jeff Hatch to respond to the solar panel stuff because I, I thought I heard something about these being dual-sided or something. Anyway, Jeff, would you mind clarifying just before we go forward with more comments about solar?
Thank you, Commissioner Faraday, Mr. Entel for your, your comments. In regards to the concern for solar panels being crushed, we did indicate in the email from Jesse Simpson that these will have to be engineered to have a substructure independent of the structure that supports the solar panels to be able to support that snow load. In addition, the snow melt system that we are proposing for roof structure would also include the solar panels. So the intent would be that we're not producing something that is storing the snow on those panels for an indefinite period of time. But it is something that is collecting snow melt off of those panels and then channeling that into our snow melt system. So I think the combination of proper engineering, which we have stated, and the snow melt system, which we've proposed, will eliminate the concerns for crushing and also the concern for any accumulation of snow melt. In addition, the intent in the wintertime, as it's designed, is to collect solar, solar electricity from the surfaces underneath the panel and not from the sky itself because they'll be at least somewhat impaired by snowfall.
So you were saying you will heat the panels?
Yes, sir.
To feed the purpose.
Okay, thank you so much for that clarification. Commissioner Clements, do you have some feedback?
I do, Fallon. I was just going through what Commissioner Lyons had touched on, which is a lot of what I had made note of. In particular, with the solar panels, the, the angle of the solar panels, that obviously to make them function at peak performance would be south, southwest. I'm not sure if that would create a glare issue for the folks up slope from that or not. I can't depict that being an issue by looking, there's no topos provided. So that's difficult to make that call. I'm quite concerned about the proportion of the building as it relates to the existing structures and most importantly, any potential structure in the area. It is not congruous with obviously what is currently there nor for future structures in light of existing retail in particular that is likely to be there for quite some time. The parking, I'm not going to go there. That's something I think beyond our control. I, I think it could potentially be an issue, especially in the winter months. But our city employees with what we've done in parking downtown obviously have an answer for that. I have a concern with regard to the maintenance with the exterior material of it. If it's, if it's not maintained properly, it could become quite an eyesore, once again, in light of its mass. And that's about it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Tom, Tom says, excuse me.
I really don't have a lot of comments about this. I think they've done the best that they could do. I appreciated the animation. So I, I don't have a lot of concerns about it, I would say. That's all I got.
Thank you. Commissioner Clements?
I have a lot to add. I as well really appreciate the 3D rendering and animations. My concerns definitely mirror that of Commissioner Lyons and Clements.
Okay. And Commissioner Tunnel?
Yeah, I don't really think I have anything to add. You know, it's, when you say it's out of, when we talk about it being, you know, scale-wise, out of context with the buildings around it, you know, that doesn't concern me as much as, as we're at 53 feet, if I got the math right. And I'd rather try to stay within what's, what is allowable with concerns that have been brought up about the, the solar panels. I, I'm not, I don't know. I'm not sure that that needs to be part of the project, but that's not for me to say, I guess. So no, I don't think I have anything else to add.
Okay. I've got a hand raise from Jeff Hatch. Did you have a comment?
Commissioner Faraday, the, the proposed height was originally 52 feet at our previous application and we lowered that to 52 feet, not 53. And for consideration for, for this application, you know, I think we have other opportunities on the, on the site and on the building to potentially utilize, you know, solar, maybe even on the northern portion of the patio space. So if the, if the solar panels are still a level of contention being over that 50-foot, even though their, you know, staff considers them to be an exemption, we would be, be, you know, open to the consideration of eliminating that from the top, which would then lower the height of the building down to that 43-foot range, just as a consideration. But we did, we did lower an additional two feet in response to the previous concern.
Thank you. Okay, did I get all the commissioners?
Okay. Fallon?
Yes.
We've got our city attorney on the phone, Bill Punkinny. And I was hoping that he could just provide a little overview just to help. I know you haven't been able to express your questions or concerns yet, but once you are done, I think he can kind of give you the decision-making criteria that's under the authority of the ordinance. I just want to make sure that we, we stick to the, to what the commission is considering so we get the discussion right for the findings and conclusions.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, for my comments, I guess I, I don't have really strong feelings, negative feelings about this. I can, I can absolutely see where the concerns are coming from. I have trouble comparing this to the current downtown that we, we have. Just because our development has been so long-term. We haven't had much happening down there for a while since. But now that we've got kind of the sidewalks that have kind of revitalized that area and I would anticipate, I would assume that we're going to see some development sort of coming forward in the near future, I would imagine. I have no idea. But so to me, this, this project isn't sort of as concerning, I think, as it is to others. Of course, we, we wouldn't want to be having 50-foot buildings on every lot downtown. I think I fully understand sort of where that concern is coming from. But I do also kind of recognize that as, I'm guessing the applicant has sort of balanced, sort of weighed their options. And if you're going to invest in a property, you have to, it has to make sense. So my sort of small-town heart would love to see that little house just sort of refurbished and, and made whole again. But I know that that really doesn't do much for, for the business side. So I, I don't have a whole lot to add outside of that. So yeah, if we could get some sort of feedback from our attorney, that would be great.
Hi there, everybody. This is Bill Punkinny. I'm an attorney for White Peterson and we represent the city as well as the P&amp;Z board. And so if you'll excuse me, I'm going to look away because I'm looking at my, my other computer screen here that's got the design criteria. But it, there's really two areas that the P&amp;Z commission needs to give advice to staff on this. And the first one is on the conditional use permit. And so I'm not going to read all 12 of those criteria, but suffice it to say they're on page 30 of your packet. And so as you sort of run your analysis, and I think, you know, a lot of commissioners have done a really good job on this today. But, but, but keep, keep your comments there. Perfect, thank you, Rachel. Keep your, your advice and comments on the conditional use permit limited to these criteria. And if you have any questions about those, either myself or I'm sure Michelle or Diane would be happy to, to answer those. And then with respect to the design review, which is sort of the second element, which you're taking up today, I will read those to you since they're short. The references to, and I didn't see those in the packet. Maybe I missed them and that's why I wanted to read those. But it's, it's McCall City Code Section 31607. And A is the project is in general conformance with the comprehensive plan. B is the project does not jeopardize the health, safety and welfare of the public. C, the project conforms to the applicable specifications outlined in the City of McCall Design Guidelines Incorporated by reference herein, as well as other applicable requirements of the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance adopted by the City of McCall. And D, if applicable, a subdivision design review, which is not applicable here. So just general advice, again, as you're making your recommendations to staff, please limit them to these criteria. Michelle, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add?
I don't think I have anything further to add. I just, I think it's just a good reminder so that when we craft findings and conclusions, we've got sort of fair rationale for the decision for the commission.
Yes, that is hopeful, thank you. So I think, hmm, how to go about this? So I guess we can just go through each criteria and get a sense of how we feel if we need to discuss an item. So number- and get a sense of how we feel, if we need to discuss an item. So number one, does anyone have, feel that this project does not fulfill that item?
Could they be read out so we can, we know what you're talking about?
Sure. Fallon, do you mind reading the first one?
Yeah, sure. Sorry. Let me, I'm trying to get it on my, I'm trying to read it really small.
Otherwise, we can do it as well.
It constitutes a conditional use authorized in the zone it's involved.
Thank you.
So this one, Fallon, under code section, I'll just pull it up here if I have it up.
30.
You have it in front of you.
303-something.
Yeah, so basically, this is in that Title III, Chapter IV, and it basically is the table that says building height. And in the CBD, it says 50 feet with a footnote 2, which means that the applicant's able to apply for a conditional use permit to go over 35 feet and up to 50.
So I would say that this one is probably easily met. Okay, number two, we've got be harmonious.
Could I, I'm sorry, this is Scott.
Yeah.
Can you, I'm a little confused. I think the applicant just said it was 52 feet.
Yeah, the extra two feet that is falling under that exception, which is about what Diane explained earlier, and you probably have that code section in front of you, Diane.
It's 31, it's the definitions.
It's under the definitions. There's some exceptions to the 50-foot height. And so that extra two feet is for not the structure, but the solar panel.
No, I understand that. I guess it didn't specifically say solar panels. It had things like elevator shafts and other things, I think, if I remember right. But so I guess that clarifies it.
I think we're stuck with a code conundrum on that one, unfortunately.
Right? We've used that section to cover panels.
Yeah, not necessarily to accept them from the 50-foot height limit, but we do have other examples of rooftop solar panels. And we did confer with legal on this, and so it's by assumption, it's not specifically called out, but it's essentially kind of like a utility, like a number of these other items that are listed.
I'm happy to answer any questions on that, if you have any commissioners. But, you know, pretty clearly, those solar panels would fall within the definition of the pertinences. So you would treat it like an antenna or a chimney.
Okay. So can we move on to number two? Does anyone else have questions on that item? Okay, number two, of conditional use permit criteria, be harmonious with and in accord with the general objectives and with any specific objectives of the comprehensive plan and/or this title.
I'm not sure on that one. I still, I don't know if this would fit under that or possibly somewhere else. But again, back in the design guidelines and page two of the staff report, the top thing, mechanical equipment, solar panels on roofs must be hidden or de-emphasized so they are not readily visible by, from nearby properties. Now, they won't be visible by the next-door properties, but they'll certainly be highly visible by the entire Alpine Village. And then again, it also signifies skylights and solar panels must be designed to fit flush with the roof's surface. These are creating a whole new roof structure, or at least that's visually what it looks like. I mean, they have a whole structure. They are not attached to the roof. So I would say that does not agree with that item.
This is Commissioner Clements. I agree with that. It's possible for these to be fit flush below a rim that would be approximately a foot and a half above the structural roof load capacity. And the way these are designed, I don't think it meets that criterion.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Tunnel. I would agree with that as well.
I did hear, I believe, the applicant offer to, I think, reconfigure that solar arrangement. If I heard that correctly, would, if that were the case, would that help alleviate this concern about?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. So we will kind of put a little pin on that one. Any other comments, or can I move to number three?
To number three or number two?
I was just on number two.
Okay, yes, okay. I do on number three. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead if you want to read it. I'm sorry.
Sure. So number three is be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing or likely character of the neighborhood, and that such use will not change the essential character of the surrounding area.
This is Commissioner Lyons again. It does not, to me, appear to be harmonious with the appropriate and appropriate in the appearance for the character of the neighborhood. I think that structure being that high, just does not go with the neighborhood. So I do not believe it's harmonious with the neighborhood currently.
Well, I, this is Commissioner Tunnel. I guess I'm relying more on the likely character of the neighborhood. I think it's more likely that the neighborhood will, 10 years from now, look more like this structure than what's there now.
Any other comments?
Fallon, this is Commissioner Clements. Probably more of a question directed at staff with regard to the maintenance or maintain to be harmonious and appropriate. Once again, the concern being that the material is used to skin that thing is somewhat maintenance-intensive. And are there any assurances the city can provide, or that can be written into an agreement with regard to maintaining that so it doesn't become an eyesore?
Not really. I mean, we don't really have that guarantee for any structure within the community. The only time we generally see that kind of language, it's built into the HOA, like with residential subdivisions, but even that isn't necessarily enforceable.
Sure. Yeah, I'm aware of that on several HOA boards. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other commissioner feedback on number three? Designed, constructed, operated, and maintained to be harmonious and appropriate. Okay, number four, not be detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of such proposed use.
On that one, this is Commissioner Clements, again, on that one, if the solar panels were flat with the roof structure and rimmed, it would take that concern that I have away with regard to the safety of a snow release from the panels. I understand the applicant's intention to heat the panels, but that hasn't been proven yet to be possible. So, yeah, if they were not elevated, I'd be more comfortable with that.
Okay. Number five, not cause any substantially harmful environmental consequences to any land or waters within the planning jurisdiction. Number six, not create excessive additional public cost for public facilities and services, and will not be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community.
I have a possible slight concern on this one, and it may or may not fit in this category, but I just see with the hospital that you're definitely going to have people parking along the streets or in somebody else's parking lot. It's inevitable it's going to happen at night through the winter, and it's going to cause public staff or staff, whether it's the plowing or the police department, to spend time to track down who and where they are. It's going to happen often. I just, and I don't know if it's anything we do because we can't require the parking, but I just can see that that's going to be an issue. But again, it may be something we can't really control on that.
Yeah. Okay. Number seven, be served adequately by essential public facilities and services, including highways, streets, police, and fire protection, drainage structures, refuse disposal, water and sewer, and schools. The applicant may be required as a condition of approval to mitigate any deficient public service. Okay. And number eight, not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, equipment, or conditions of operation that will cause unreasonable production of traffic, noise, smoke, fumes, glare, odors, or other forms of pollution.
This one, I'm not sure, I mean, if they go down below the roof line, I'm not sure about if it would create glare or not. But I would still say that it's going to create a shadow effect on the adjoining buildings to the east, and that's something that they're not going to be able to control. So I believe that would be an issue for the adjoining building.
Michelle or Diane, could you, do you have any kind of, anything you could add on that sort of concept of shadowing another property? Does that play into our consideration?
No, we don't have anything that explicitly, I think, really addresses that. You know, we do have things like specific in our code about like snow trespass and things like that. But I can't think of anything related to shadows.
I would say we won't really have a property that's like this, so it hasn't been addressed yet. But I do know it's in other communities.
Okay. So number nine, have vehicular approaches to the property so designed as not to create a detrimental interference with traffic on surrounding public or private thoroughfares, or adversely affect the pedestrian environment. Okay. Number 10, not result in the destruction, loss, or damage of an important natural, scenic, or historic feature.
Al historic is his house. I mean, that could be, I'm just kidding. I wanted to say that, so.
I would say it's historic. Sorry, I have a dog barking in the background. She won't stop. Somebody come get her. Okay, be on a site of sufficient, I'm sorry, number 11, be on a site of sufficient size to accommodate the proposed use, including the yards, open spaces, snow storage walls, fences, parking areas, loading zones, and design standards applicable.
This is Commissioner Clements. I think we're in uncharted waters on that one, Fallon. I'm not sure we've seen anything that is comparable. It's proposed, that is basically sidewalk to sidewalk.
Sure. Yeah, we are, this is kind of a moment in our history a little bit that I think we're on a little bit of a cusp, perhaps. Very likely not the first application of its kind, I would imagine. But yeah, this body has not dealt with a project this sort of intensive, I guess, if that qualifies, in terms of density in the downtown for maybe ever. So, yeah, it is, it's a little difficult to compare.
So I could add just a few, like, points of reference since I've been here, because we haven't, as you mentioned, we haven't had a ton of commercial redevelopment or development in our downtown core. But some other examples might be what was formerly known as the Hub Building over on Roosevelt. That's a mixed-use building. The Park Street Plaza, which I think is a couple properties away on the highway. Both of those buildings are 35 feet. There are some exceptions. I know on that former Hub Building for a staircase. And then I would say the other one that's probably most similar would be Alpine Village that has a conditional use to go up to 50 feet would be another mixed-use building. And then I, you know, the ice skating rink, I think that, that's more than 15 years old, but that's a 35-foot-high building that's more utilizing the zero-lot lines and the, a little more lack coverage than some of these one-story kind of older structures with surface parking lots.
Thanks, Michelle. Okay. And then number 12, have a minimal negative economic impact on the neighborhood or surrounding community.
I think it could definitely have some impact to the, some of the Alpine Village units, because it will be in their view corridor. And there's adjoining other properties as well there that it will affect. I don't know how different that would be if it was at the 35-foot height limit. It'd be nice to see the difference in a real, real tight picture, I guess. But I think at current height and stuff, it would definitely impact.
Any other comment on that point specifically, sort of that impact to other property values, which I'm not sure? Okay, so the most sort of contentious item seems to be the elevated solar panels. And that's focused mostly around condition number two. And then there was a little bit of an add-in to number three. So I believe, if I'm recalling correctly this process, we need to provide sort of feedback about how the applicant can meet these conditions. Is that right, Diane, Michelle?
Yes, I think that would be an appropriate direction to go. And remember that you're making a recommendation to the city council. They'll be the final decision-maker on the conditional use permit.
So does anybody have?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Tunnel. I just, I don't have a lot to add. I like the use. I like the mixed use. I think it's appropriate for that, for downtown. I think it addresses the comprehensive plan. I like, I personally like the design. I got concerns about the height, which is, could easily be alleviated by removing the solar panels. Then it drops down to 43 feet, I believe, which probably would help. Then it drops down to 43 feet, I believe, which probably would help with any concerns over item number 12. So I thought I heard the applicant say that they had potential options with the, to change the solar situation, which in my opinion would address the concerns that I have.
Okay. Anybody else have comments relative to that?
Commissioner Thompson, I agree with Scott on that. I'm okay with the height, but if they were to remove the solar panels and put them on the other part of the structure, that's even more, I'd be more in favor of it, so.
Thank you. So unless there are any further comments, I'm taking the silence to be agreement. Would anyone like, we do need to make a recommendation to city council. So what I'm hearing is that it sounds like we would be willing to recommend approval with the condition that the solar panels be relocated from the roof to whatever other location the applicant had in mind. We don't have a specific, I think he said the parking.
I thought I heard parking, yeah.
Which would be a lower, for sure, a lower location. Is there anyone who would like to sort of present a motion to that effect? Or is there further discussion?
Madam Chair, just a point of clarification that we do need to prepare findings of fact and conclusions to support your decision, which would, we would bring back to the next meeting.
Okay.
I would try to put that in the form of a motion that we would recommend approval of the conditional use if the solar panels are removed from the, the upper-level roof, and if they're used at all, you know, placed on the, on the parking, whatever the, yeah, placed on the parking structure. And ask that, do I need to ask about the findings of fact being provided to us at the next meeting? Include that in. Okay. Okay, then that, I guess that's, hopefully that will suffice as a motion.
This is Bill Punkinian. Just to be clear, that the motion is not to approve it at this meeting, but to approve recommendation of findings of fact and conclusions of law that would support that recommendation. Is that correct?
Yes, that's what I tried to say, but not very well.
I was, I was following you. We're good.
Okay.
Commissioner Thompson, I second that motion.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a recommendation for findings of fact. I'm not going to be able to repeat this. And we have a motion and a second. Diane, would you like to do a roll call vote?
Yes, please. Or do you want me to do it? I'm sorry. All right. Commissioner Tunnel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
No.
Commissioner Clemens?
Yes.
Commissioner Cron?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Sheriff Faraday?
Yes. Okay. Thank you, everyone. On to our next item. Thank you. Okay, and we are still in our business.
Do they make a motion for the design review?
Yeah, that's, thank you, Rachel. There needs to be a separate motion for the design review so that we can see their findings and conclusions for that item as well.
Okay. Is that Commissioner Cron with your hand up? I can't tell.
Yeah, that's just for the next one because I have to re-close myself.
Okay, so let's do this designer view thing, and then you can. If anyone, would anyone like to make a motion for our, let's see, it's design review 20-46 for the 901 Second Street project?
Commissioner Thompson, I move that we approve design review 2046.
This is Commissioner Tunnel. I second that.
Okay. Would you like another roll call vote, Diane?
I don't, I don't think we need one.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. I think we had one nay. Is that correct?
Yeah, Commissioner Lyons.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss. Okay. All right. Thank you. We will now move on. Sorry about that. On to design review 2044 at 651 Stockton Drive.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the commission. This is a continued item from February 2. At that time, you requested that the applicant work with staff in reviewing the design guidelines and provide additional materials as required and to continue it until this, this meeting. On February 16, the applicant representative indicated that they had not had enough time to prepare the materials, and they requested a continuance until the commission's April 6 meeting. Since work continues on this project, the staff has communicated to the applicant and the representative that unless the requested materials are submitted by March 15, a stop-work order on the building permit would be initiated. So we've had some additional communications from members of the public, which I think you all have copies of, from Kimberly Apperson, and Lou Beandry, and Bonnie Mackinson, and Pam Weisenbach. So that's all I have to offer unless there's any questions.
So do we need to make a motion to continue to April?
Yes, please.
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Tunnel has made a motion to continue design review 2044 to the April meeting.
Commissioner Thompson, I second that.
Thank you.
Do we have to have any public comment, or is there anybody at once, since it was continued from the public meeting and we've noticed it? I don't know if anybody wants to comment, but I just saw that on.
Bill, do you have any comment on, do they need, are they required to open the public hearing, or if they decide to continue it?
Well, I guess as a courtesy to anybody that's there that wants to give testimony, maybe we should allow them to give testimony. Otherwise, we could just continue it on.
There's no one present here in Legion Hall for this application. I'm not sure if there's anybody on the phone.
Okay. If there is anyone on the phone, I would be happy to take your public comments this evening, though we are going to continue this item to next month. If you would like, yeah, is that Kim Apperson?
Hello?
Yes.
Okay. This is Kim Apperson. And yeah, since you're giving us the opportunity to make some comments, I don't know what the commission has in front of them from me. I did make a public records request right after, within a week after the last meeting. And is that what they have in front of them?
They have your cover, I'm sorry, they have your cover email and the, and the request for the public records request.
Do they have in front of them the, how that request was fulfilled?
I don't know that.
Not necessarily, because it's a separate process.
Okay. So thank you for answering that, because that influences what I'd like to say. And in that fulfillment of that public records request, and I asked for that because there just seems some congruence between what the applicant stated as far as being aware of the design review process he was required to undergo, and what the city staff had informed me that they informed him. And by looking at those email trails and some voicemails that I really appreciate the city sending to me, it was pretty obvious that the city had informed the applicant on the date that he, they said that they informed him towards the end of September that he was going to have to go through a design review. And they made some other efforts to contact the applicant, and it wasn't until November that the applicant finally said, oh, he hadn't had time to look at this. I'm paraphrasing, of course. But, and now the applicant still hasn't had time to do this, but he's had ample time to almost complete his structure. And so I appreciate that the staff has proposed a stop-work order somewhere down the line. I think it's a little late. I think they need to submit or issue a stop-work order right now. This fellow is not going to comply unless, I don't know what the city can do, I don't know what the commission can do, but he is not going to willingly comply. It's pretty obvious from his past actions. And if the commission hasn't taken a drive up Stockton Lane, I wish that some of the members would. It's pretty obvious that this building does not belong in our neighborhood. So anyhow, I just wanted to make sure the commission has the full story of what's transpired with this applicant. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Is there anyone else on the phone who would like to comment? You do have to unmute yourself, which is star six, and there's usually a little delay before we can hear you. I will allow a few seconds to see if anyone else wanted to speak this evening. Okay, it doesn't sound like anybody else is going to talk. So do we need to continue this public hearing, or do we close it and we have another?
Madam Chair, I would be, I think, most exceeding if you would just continue it until April 6 to your next meeting. That way we don't have to go out and be noticed. But we certainly hope that we can take action at that time.
Okay. So let's see. Commissioner Tunnel, were you the one that made the motion?
Yes.
Could you continue the public hearing with your motion, sort of?
Yeah, I'd like to amend, amend the motion to include continuing the public hearing to the April meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Clemens is second.
Okay, thank you. So it has been moved and seconded to continue this item to our April 6 meeting with the public hearing that is already, that will be continued to that, to that meeting. So, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. Motion passed. Okay. Lost my list here. Okay. All right. Oh, my gosh. Sorry, guys. I've kept losing what I'm looking at. Okay. So we are on to new business. Yes? Or is there any other information or discussion you need on this item?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so to new business, we have design review 2103 in Shoreline, 2101 at 2333 Tooting Lane. Is the applicant with us?
Yes.
Okay. You are welcome to go ahead and present.
From here?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, commission. My name is Javon Truex. My address is 8403 Spring Creek Lane in Middleton, Idaho. And I'm here representing David Turnbull and his project at 2333 Tooting Lane, which is in Lux Point. Project is fairly simple and straightforward. It's an addition of a garage with some finished space above to an existing residence that's been in existence for quite a few years. It was never built with an attached garage. The owner would like to be able to park inside as opposed to outside when he is visiting the home. And so the proposed project would consist of a two-car garage, and within the attic space over the garage would be some living space or finished space, conditioned space, if you will. It meets the setbacks requirements, the lot coverage requirements. As far as the materials and the color scheme proposed, it's essentially just matching the existing residence. In fact, the addition is meant to look like it was never an addition, just that it was part of the original structure. The, the existing residence would block any view of the addition from the lake. The site is fairly heavily treed, so even neighboring properties would have a difficult time seeing the addition. That image right there, you can see the colored portion is the addition. The white area, it's not accurate as far as color, obviously. It's more to show what the addition and what isn't addition. So as you can see in the image also, the addition is partially into the hill, so that hillside currently slopes down. It does get steeper right there because that is where the owner parks when he's at the residence. But there would be a retaining wall that would be part of the foundation of the garage that the earth would come down and rest against, as opposed to spacing a retaining wall out in other directions. That's the upper level you can see is, has windows that match what you would see from the lakeside of the existing house. So that's part of just the look of the existing and the ways that we would want to match. I think if you keep scrolling through there, you'll eventually come to one where it shows what the existing house looks like with the addition. Oh, maybe not.
There was an early one.
Thought I had one that showed, we tried to superimpose the addition on a photo of the existing house, but maybe it's not showing up there. It was something, but I don't know maybe it didn't show. So the, the square footage is 1,834 square feet in total. That's including the garage and the finished space above. This during. This during the design process was sent out to immediate neighbors. This was in addition to the public hearing notices that were required. The owner wanted to reach out to his neighbors, make sure they had no concerns, which he said they did not. This has also been approved by the HOA, Lux Point HOA. They had no problem with it. So with that, I think I'll turn over. You have any questions?
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Or can we get our staff reports from Diane? Okay. You are welcome to sit down. Thank you, and we'll have Diane sort of run through the staff reports with us.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Yes, this is Shoreline and a design review application. The additional garage with a second-story living space would be 1,834 square feet attached to the existing residence. The site itself is about 1.7 acres, and the current lot coverage would be 94% of the allowable with that addition. The maximum height of the new addition would be 30.5 feet. The minimum required setbacks for the parcel is 50 feet from the ordinary high-water mark of Payette Lake, 20 feet from the property line, front property line, and 15 feet from each side. The application is proposing setbacks for the addition of approximately 300 feet from the front property line, approximately 20 feet from the nearest side property lines, and more than 75 feet from the high-water mark on the lake. So it's, as the architect indicated, it's on the landward side and not visible from the lake. There's no trees to be removed, and we received no public comments. We received comments from the McCall City Engineer requiring some provisions for the final design. Most of concern were related to the drainage management guidelines, which they feel they will adhere to. We also had a comment from Payette Lake's Recreation Water and Sewer District, which they had no comments, sorry, as well as McFall, McFall, McCall Fire and EMS. They had no comments. The Big Payette Lake Water Quality Council, you know, were concerned about the disruption of the natural conditions and potential for erosion. They're very supportive of the best management practices that we put in place for drainage, storm drainage management. So you are looking at this from both the criteria of the design review, and this is an application that came into, under our new design guidelines, as well as the shoreline requirements. There is a provision in the shoreline requirements, because there's a very small portion of the existing structure which encroaches into the 50-foot setback. And so the provision is that a one-time addition of less than 25% of the total square footage of the existing non-conforming structure is allowed, so long as the addition conforms to all the setback requirements of the zone, which this does. So in terms of the setbacks have been adequately determined on the plan, which is another criteria in Shoreline. A 404 permit does not appear to be necessary, and the proposal meets all of the requirements of the shoreline and the R4 low-density residential zone. So conditions of approval, oh, and then I should probably mention some of our new requirements for visibility, which this does not have any visibility from the shoreline asset. It's designed to look like the existing structure, same siding, same design. It brings the total square footage of the residence to 9,800 square feet, so it's below our new 10,000-square-foot maximum house size. So with that, some conditions of approval that we would recommend from our staff and city engineering. If I scroll down here. Number one, prior to the issuance of the building permit, the applicant shall receive the final engineering approval from the city engineer based on the comments that they provided us. A detailed site work and grading plan is required and shall be incorporated with the architectural plans for construction. Temporary and permanent storm water BMPs and snow storage areas, as contemplated in the submitted storm water report, shall be shown on the construction grading and drainage plan. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall provide fixture details that demonstrates that any existing or proposed new fixture are in compliance with McCall's outdoor lighting ordinance. And finally, number four, that design review approval shall lapse and become void whenever the applicant has not applied for a building permit within one year from the date of this approval.
Thank you. Okay. I'm guessing we don't have many questions, because this is very straightforward, but commissioners, jump in if you do have comments or questions. Otherwise, we will move to the public hearing. Okay, so I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Do you have anyone there that you are aware wants to make comments?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone on the phone who would like to make comments? To do so, you have to unmute yourself, which requires you to hit star six, and there's usually a small delay. But I will allow a few moments in case anyone would like to comment. Okay, and hearing no one come forward, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, any concerns on this one? This looks pretty easy-peasy in terms of what it is and seems to tick all the boxes.
This is Commissioner Clements. I agree with your assessment, Fallon.
As do I.
Okay.
So Commissioner Thompson, how does, I can't remember if the shoreline is a recommendation to the city council or if it's just something we approve ourselves.
It is a direct approval, right?
Yeah, you're the final decision-maker on these.
So I move that we approve design review 2103 in Shoreline, 2101.
Second that. Commissioner Tunnel?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passed. So design review 2103 and Shoreline 2101 have been approved. All right, and we will move on to design review 2105 at 450 Timbercrest Loop. Martin Souza, or your representative, are you with us?
Yes, Jason Hoskins here. Martin Souza is also here, but I'm here to represent him as well.
Okay, great. You can go ahead and tell us about your project. We've got it in front of us.
Awesome. It is new, single-family residence, two stories, just over 5,000 square feet. It does meet all the setback requirements and height requirements. We're not proposing to remove any trees. We're going to use kind of the existing topography with the house, and it's going to be designed with durable materials in kind of a mountain rustic style. There'll be board and bat with some shake, some lap siding, some corrugated metal, as well as some cultured stone, some corbels and brackets, and a little bit of exposed heavy timber at the entry.
Okay. Do you anticipate doing any landscaping?
Not other than what we disturb. The goal is to be very low maintenance, to kind of let the natural vegetation fill back in around the home.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions at the moment? Okay. Okay, thank you. We will go ahead and have Diane give us her staff report.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just scrolling back here a little bit. So yes, so this is a two-story, 5,123-square-foot residence in the R4 district. The, as the applicant indicated, it's located, the structure is located in the center of the lot, which has a gentle slope down from the street. It's kind of diagonally situated, and the property kind of nestles into the area. The development site has been cleared of trees, but there's a fringe of trees around the whole border of the site. It's 21,944 square feet, has 150-foot street frontage, which is more than the minimum requirements. It meets all of the setback requirements, 20 feet plus on the front, 10 on the rear, and 22.6 on the sides for a total of 45. Its lot coverage is at 20%, which is close to the 22% limit for that size of a lot. And the height is 32, 11 and 3/4 inches. So there's a number of standards that we looked at this project with in terms of design review. It requires your review, because it's over 5,000 square feet. It requires looking at the tree removal and fire hazard mitigation standards. Parking, it has the two required parking spaces. Driveway width, grade, and setbacks engineering indicates that they don't feel there will be any difficulty in meeting those standards. It has provided snow storage area. As the applicant indicates, the intent to, the remaining site not disturbed by construction will remain in its natural condition, and they'll restore as we've conditioned it after the construction is completed. There were no comments from McCall Fire and EMS, Idaho Department of Transportation, Central District Health, and Idaho Department of Lands. The engineer indicate there's a storm drainage master plan in place for the Timbercrest subdivision, and that this project would adhere, would be required to adhere to those requirements. And with that, they were satisfied that storm drainage would be adequately taken care of. They have some other requirements for detailed engineering, and a driveway permit is required. Services available from the Payette Lake's Recreation Water and Sewer District. And the city arborists indicated that they would like to provide some guidance and make sure that the area that is disturbed is revegetated, and measures are taken to limit the spread of noxious weeds. So with that, our conditions are that the applicant shall provide evidence that a design review plans were prepared by an Idaho licensed architect or an architect licensed in another state, which is an agreement with Idaho that recognizes the licensing. That the design review application shall lapse and become void whenever the applicant has not applied for a building permit within one year from the date of initial approval. That a restoration plan of the area disturbed during construction, including the mitigation of the spread of noxious weed during and after construction, shall be approved by the city arborist prior to the issuance of building permit. In addition, any further removal shall be done in consultation with the arborist. And the project will comply with the conditions provided in the storm water report for the Timbercrest subdivision. A detailed site work and grading plan, including a site utility plan, shall be provided for engineering review and incorporated into the architectural plans for construction prior to issuance of the building permit. And temporary and permanent storm water BMPs for erosion control and identification of appropriate onsite snow storage areas shall be shown on the construction plan. And a driveway permit, as indicated, should be required. And existing sewer service connection for the lot shall be protected from damage during construction of the proposed structure to prevent excessive water or debris from entering the sewer system. And purchase of a sewer construction permit is required, and inflows of surface water and excessive filtrations are prohibited. I think that completes our review of this project and the recommended conditions for approval.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Diane or the applicant before I open the public hearing? Okay, I will go ahead and open the public hearing to anyone who would like to speak about this project, which is design review 2105 at 450 Timbercrest Loop. If you are on the phone and you'd like to speak, you just need to hit stars, star six, excuse me, to unmute yourself, and it takes a few moments for your audio to come through to us. Okay. Does it sound like I'm getting anybody? So I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, any concerns on this project? Another that seems pretty straightforward. Not too much of concern for me.
Now, this is Commissioner Tunnel. I'd make a motion to approve design review 2105. This is Commissioner Clements, second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve design review 2105. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. All right. Just knocking them out here. We will move on to scenic route 2101 at TBD Spring Mountain, formerly 1630 Peninsula Place. Mr. Robnett, are you with us?
I am. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. Yeah, this is, it's a design review scenic route for a home and a garage on Peninsula Point. It was previously a six-pack of condos that we just recently got the approval to turn it into one residential lot. Originally, it was going to be two, so pending the design review, we'll probably move forward with that. The garage was originally to be detached, but with the new requirement of the deed-restricted low-income rentals on the property, the owners reluctantly attached it to the house. It's for their boat. They've got a riverboat that they run the river in, and they don't want it sitting outside, so. And I've gone through the conditions of approval. I don't have an issue with any of them except for one. We've already taken care of the water issues that the city required us to do, terminating the main line running out that went to this hydrant at the end. But the biggest issue I have is the landscaping. And I can't see what you guys have in front of you, but if you go to the original submittal, it should be sheet A2. Shows the site plan with some landscaping on it. Do you guys see that?
Rachel's working on getting.
It's 129, Rachel. Nope, that's not it. That's not it.
What exactly am I looking for? It might be at the very end. I remember it maybe being toward the.
Is it the landscaping plan?
Yeah, maybe. Is that right?
That's the amended landscaping plan.
Okay. I don't know if I saw one that was otherwise.
Mr. Robnett, was it a smaller scale than the amended one?
No.
Okay.
I can try and find it in the original submitted materials.
Okay. I'll go ahead and move forward. If you find it, bring it up. But the original landscape plan showed 20, what was it, 25 trees along the street as a screen. The owners are interested in screening. They want to have a little bit of privacy back there. 26 trees is a lot of trees. You can see the canopies are all touching, all overlapping. Makes a great screen. So that's what we submitted, 26 trees as the screen wall or the screening. I got an email on February 14th that said the city had new requirements based on the size of the frontage and they required 72 trees and 208 bushes based on a new requirement that was passed on January 14th. Then I got another email that said, well, it was from Morgan and it said, if I didn't get the revised plan showing the 72 trees, 208 bushes, that I couldn't make this agenda. It would be put on the next month's agenda. So I sent the amended plan, but I am certainly not agreeing to that. If you guys look at that amended landscape plan, you can see what it is. 72 trees and 208 bushes is an insane amount of plantings on a single-family lot. I sold that lot for $75,000, that front lot. And I've gotten a couple of estimates on the required landscaping so far. One of them exceeded $100,000. One of them was $67,640. So the requirements of plantings is almost at the land value. Not to mention that, I mean, the trees will eventually choke each other out. That plan doesn't show the path that runs along there, so we still have to separate those out and go around the path. The maintenance and the irrigation of those trees, I mean, that's just not what these people are looking for. My snow storage area is gone. I had a nice snow storage area to remove the snow on that driveway and it's now covered in trees, so we have absolutely zero snow storage on this lot. So I guess what I would like to see happen is I would like to have our original landscape plan that shows 26 trees as a very nice screen wall approved. If you drive down Spring Mountain Boulevard as you drop down into the meadows, from that hill coming into the meadows to Lit Creek, that's kind of the open area of the scenic route, if you will. And there's some bare spots where no landscaping is done. And then some houses that have been built in and they've got their landscaping up and it's approximately a tree about every 20 running feet of the street. And it looks great. I think that's, you know, a fair amount of trees, you know? And so the plan that we have is way more than what has been done so far. The 25 trees that are proposed, I guess, I think I said 26 earlier, but it's 25, I think would make a very, very adequate screen wall. And the 72, in my opinion, is just insane. So I guess that's what I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Michelle or Diane, can you kind of enlighten us on the landscaping requirements? I feel like I haven't seen sort of this level of requirement before, so I don't know. Just seems like different. Michelle?
We got turned off, sorry. We provided you a great explanation.
You missed it.
You missed it. So this is part of our new requirements that were adopted in January 14th for the scenic route overlay and there are new landscaping requirements to require one tree and five shrubs, native shrubs, for every 100 square feet of required street setback. So the fact that they have this length of frontage along Spring Mountain really does compound the number of trees, 72 trees and 208 native shrubs to meet the landscaping requirements. Now, I don't know if Michelle wants to speak to this, but I think when we were developing those landscaping standards, we were probably thinking more along a commercial corridor than a residential corridor, where, you know, people want to have their business, but they need to soften it with some landscaping in the front. So that's where the requirements come from. And this plan that you see on the screen now meets those requirements. Other than that, there were no other particular problems with this other than originally they had a fairly wide 30-foot driveway entrance, which was, again, we adopted new standards for 20 feet maximum width for driveways. And particularly along the scenic route, we think it's important to keep that driveway width, you know, even with a big boat, as narrow as possible. So in the driveway permit that will be issued by the city engineer, that will be the standard. They'll look at this. There were no other comments of significance from anyone else who are just looking at this from a scenic route overlay standard basis. The HOA approves the design review, so that is not before you tonight. So the conditions are, prior to issuance of the building permit, the applicant will, shall receive final engineering approval, as well as the applicant shall provide the city with a copy of the HOA Design Review Committee approved letter. And prior to issuance of the permit, a building permit, the applicant shall provide a copy of the plan stamped by a licensed architect. Prior to issuance of the building permit, the applicant shall provide the city with a copy of a recorded copy of the Aspen Ridge III, third amended plat, converting the parcel into a single-family resident lot from the original platted condo site. And prior to the issuance of the building permit, the site plan shall be amended to reflect a minimum front yard setback of 25 feet and a maximum driveway width of 20 feet consistent with the McCall City Code. And pursuant to the McCall City Code, design review approvals shall lapse and become void whenever the applicant is not applied for a building permit within one year from the date of initial approval.
Diane, this Commissioner Alliance, could you go over that tree ratio and how that breaks down? Again, it's one tree and five shrubs per 100 feet of what?
100 square feet of...
Of the lot?
...of setback and frontage. So you would take the amount of setback and the amount of frontage and that square footage total. And then it's 100 feet for each square footage.
What's the setback on the 20-foot street?
25 feet, yeah.
25 feet?
And what's the length of this lot again?
It seems like an awfully lot.
Well, and I think the issue with this one is I think it's the amount of frontage that they have.
Oh, yeah.
So this isn't really a typical-sized lot with that kind of frontage.
Yeah, what's the frontage on that? Even approximately. It's crazy high for trees.
It's a tree every 10 by 10.
I don't see the frontage.
290 feet.
Yeah, so it's a pretty large, wide lot because of the sort of irregular shape.
Yeah, I'll bring up the site plan again, the lot.
But that's fine. I can see it now, but wow, it does seem like a lot.
So we do have the opportunity, though, to maybe adjust that requirement?
I think it's reasonable, you know, as you look at this, it's a very, as we said, long frontage and it's a very irregular shaped, which extends that frontage even more. So I think it's, you could make an exception based on that, those facts.
I mean, do you think that, I mean, because it's really, the idea behind this is to have a vegetated buffer along our scenic routes. And the idea is that you're creating that to shield the structure from the scenic route. So like, just when I look at that lot, it looks like that top portion, you know, like you could kind of almost measure out. I'm just thinking for a way to justify.
Half of it.
Yeah, if you measured out like what the actual frontage is, that's in front of the home versus sort of you've got that sort of weird piece that looks like a foot at the bottom.
I think on the bottom piece of that, behind it, I can't remember. Is that the pond on the backside or is it above the house? On the lower side from this picture we're looking at now?
I think, no, I can't remember. I think it might be behind it. I feel like the renderings maybe showed us.
The pond is on all irregular-shaped sides. It's kind of horseshoes around the lot.
So it kind of goes around the whole lot, okay. So we're kind of blocking a nice view of the pond, potentially, with all those trees, too. So I think we could probably easily justify half, minimum.
This is Commissioner Clement's. I think the tree specification is a serious overreach by whoever prescribed that, just simply from basic horticulture standards with regard to the canopy of that choking out the shrubs that are also required. I'd be real surprised if Kurt Wolf took a close look at that, that he could make sense of it because it's, in my opinion, it's totally nonsensical that that could be suggested, understanding what becomes of those trees just in a five-to-10-year timeline.
Well, one thing I just will add, and maybe Diane has a little bit more. We did research this and looked at other standards of other communities and we did have Kurt Wolf, our city arborist, look at it. The requirement does not require irrigation, so, you know, like, a number of these species, if they are not irrigated, may not survive. So I think in this case, though, I think you can reasonably look at, like a reasonable lineage for this property because of the irregular size, which is, I think, what's causing the number of trees and shrubs to be unusually high for this application.
I don't think it's fair to the applicant to require a tree that would just be written off as a, what would you call it, collateral damage, not irrigated, because if you do irrigate it, you're going to have a significant challenge when these things start developing canopy and choking each other out, as well as the shrubbery. So the applicant, I think, had about a third as many on his original? It's 26. 26 trees proposed in the original application. And the new one is? 72. 72, so a third. You know, I just know that I'm constantly trimming trees and shrubs and so on. And I got to think that, you know, that looks to me that the, what Michelle suggested with the actual front or linear feet from the house, or, you know, linear feet of the placement of the house is probably about a third of the length of the lot, right, at most. So I would say stick with the original 26 or whatever it is.
I would agree with that. I think that makes sense. If we had his original plan, because we must have, I mean, he mentioned that we had previously seen an original somewhat site plan for the vegetation plan when he combined the lots. And at that point, we had approved it. I mean, seeing as we don't have that to see, but I think 25 trees with the other shrubbery with that, I think would do more than enough for, be adequate for what the intent is to have some screening.
Yeah, and I think, too, you know, the intent, you know, commercial areas and screening commercial buildings, you know, we've dealt with a little bit of that. And I think you do need either denser, you know, bushier trees or more of them to, you know, shield a concrete or a metal building from the street. But man, this is just a little bit too much.
Okay, so I'm hearing everyone, or at least some of us are feeling that the initial proposal for landscaping seems reasonable for this instance, in this instance, as opposed to the new sort of standards, which are likely going to be influencing more commercial development. Is that accurate?
I think so, sure.
Okay, okay. Well, we will move on to the...
I can find that anywhere. The landscape plan, the landscape plan. Yeah, there's no other one. I looked in the file.
Let's move on to the public hearing. And I will open the public hearing to anyone who'd like to speak about this project. And again, anyone on the phone who wants to speak, you just need to hit star six to unmute yourself. Our list looks pretty small in terms of who's on the phone, so I don't know if we've got anybody. Okay, it sounds like nobody's going to speak and I think it's all just us. So I will close the public hearing. And aside from that landscaping issue, I think, again, this project seems to meet requirements, designer view, et cetera. So I think, as staff noted, this new landscaping requirement perhaps shouldn't or wasn't intended to impact properties like this as often as it will others. So given that location and sort of what is currently present in that area, it seems that the initial landscape plan would suffice. But if anyone does feel they'd like to request for a little bit more or somewhere in the middle, please do so.
Chair Faraday, we're not seeing an original landscaping plan in the project file, so I think if you do decide to move forward, it would be good to specify number of trees and shrubs required for this application.
Okay. I'm sorry, I thought we saw something with some little hatch marks. Yeah, so I think... Would anyone like to make a motion? The number I heard, I believe, was, was it 26 trees?
Yeah, the applicant claimed was in the first proposal. That's where the 26 came from. Which is a third of the trees, roughly, that the new code calls for. I don't remember what the percentage of shrubs to trees was.
Was it? It was five, five to one.
Five to one? So if we did, so if we did 26 trees and going on a third of it, then you could do 26 trees and, you know, 50 shrubs, which is a little more than a third of the number of shrubs you would otherwise have.
And I'm thinking we might want to ask about, you know, an emphasis, maybe on those placement of those, kind of shielding the house. Because that, like I say, that lower area is not really covering anything, the upper area is not. But, I mean, it's designed to have a buffer from the house to the road, so. I mean, without having one to see and approve, but I think we've been asked for an emphasis on, the best shielding they can from the house, from the road.
Can I suggest that the applicant submit a revised landscaping plan contingent on staff approval? And then that way we can make sure it's based on a standard and it's not arbitrary?
Yes, I think that's, that would be good.
Yeah, that, that would make sense. And then the determination can be made by court's review of what is deciduous and what is evergreen with a tree count, which I think is probably another important criterion that should be considered. Yeah, I, I think that makes sense. Do, do we need to provide a minimum suggested number of trees and shrubs? Just for something to shoot at? Or, I mean, it seems to me that, in looking at what that aerial that you showed, there's, there's a view, a vision of the property. When you first start down the hill on, on Spring Mountain, you, you can see the, the house. It, there's just as much opportunity to see the house if there were no trees from the south end of the property as there is from the north. So they do need to be properly dispersed, I guess is what I'm thinking. Correct. Placement and species. And, and yeah, quantity. Quantity, quantity, placement, species. Yeah.
Okay. Any further questions or comments on this one? And if not, can you work all of that language into a motion?
Well, I, I'll try. I'd move that we ask that staff, or ask the applicant to submit a, an addition, a new plan with maybe a 30% of the, of the trees and shrubs recommended with the new code, but to review with staff on species, appropriate species and appropriate placement to shield the, the property from the, the scenic route. I would second that. It sounds like the direction we're headed.
Okay. Diane and Michelle, does that give you enough to work with?
Yes, and is that also including the other conditions that were recommended?
Yes, I'm sorry, driveway width and so on, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, and the only, maybe the only modification to that is I don't, again, like specifying the percentage without. I think the issue that we have here is we can't just ignore code sections. And so what we need to do is have a modified landscaping plan that we can then base on existing code. And so it may be that we're, we're taking into consideration, you know, some of the lineal footage. Or there's another way, I think, that we can probably come to a number that's more reasonable. So we're happy to work with the applicant on that. I just don't want to get too prescriptive. So we're making up standards on the fly and that are different from what our code says. That makes sense. And I think our attorney will appreciate that. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I, I guess, I think there was what, nearly 500 lineal feet on the frontage? Is that correct? Something like that, 490? Oh, 290?
This, this is Mike. Do I have an opportunity to speak again or?
Um, yes, Mike, if you'd like to address, that might help us sort of get.
Okay, so I was listening. One of, one of the issues that came up was irrigation and, and it is correct. Some of these species don't need irrigation, but all species need initial irrigation for the first couple of years. So they will need to be irrigated. Your code, your currently requires, on the species, it requires 50% coniferous and 50% deciduous. So it would have to be, you know, a 50/50 mix. The other thing, I mean, but when, when you start specifying certain species right now, because of where the construction industry is at, you can't get all species. And, I mean, trees are kind of hard to come by. All the nurseries are sold out from here to Washington to Canada. So, you know, I, I don't mind being limited to a, okay, so many coniferous and so many deciduous. But sometimes if it's very specific, they're either A, very expensive to get or very hard to get. And then back to the, the comments about the length of the frontage affecting the amount of plantings. If you take this just from the south, or excuse me, the north side of the driveway, not even including the driveway, you're 150 feet of frontage there across the front. And if you take that math equation and apply the code to it, it's 37 trees and one to five. So 150 bushes, which is, it, it's just as overcrowded. And so I think whether it's a residential or a commercial, I don't think that code's gonna work. I think it's a way over planting. And the concept from, from my standpoint should not be to screen the house so you can't see it. You know, that, that, you don't want to drive down a tunnel of trees where all you can see is trees on each side. It's to break up the houses so that you have filtered views and, and it still looks nice and scenic. I don't think it's to completely screen all structures. That's why the structures are coming for the scenic route approval, so that they look nice enough to be viewed from the, from the scenic route.
Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Um, okay.
So this is Commissioner Clements, just a, a comment. I'm certainly good with just specifying conifer and deciduous without being species specific.
Commissioners, if, if I could pipe in here for a second, this is Bill Punkinney, the attorney again. I'm, I've been kind of shooting emails back and forth with Michelle. And I, I think maybe the appropriate process for this would be a variance. Because that lays out the standards under 313021, by which we can, you know, grant relief from a, a code section that just doesn't seem to fit a, a given property, which that seems to be the case here. And that provides us with, with the process moving forward. So, so what I would suggest here is, I do think that, you know, we can look to the applicant to come up with a reasonable landscaping sta- or landscaping plan. And then the applicant can work with staff to maybe determine the best path forward, path of least resistance in terms of, I guess circumventing is not the right word, but, but dealing with maybe these stringent requirements of the code that just don't make any sense in this particular instance. Michelle and Diane, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that what we should do is, I think the commission can approve the design review with a condition that the applicant will work with staff on the landscaping plan. And then I think we can take a hard look at the code. Because this is a new code provision, just to make sure we, we've got, we sort of, we've got it right. I mean, the other option is obviously we can go back. If this code provision doesn't make sense, we can always modify it as well. But I, I think for this person, you know, I think the idea that we can work with them on their landscaping plan to see if we can make it work within the requirements of the code for this one. Otherwise, you know, if they want to do something dramatically different, I think, I think you're right. We either have to change the code or, or do a variance. But I'm not convinced that, you know, I, to be honest, I haven't spent enough time specifically looking. And I don't know, Diane, if you have any suggestions. But I don't, I haven't really looked specifically at this property and that code to really know if there's anything else in the code that's a bit of a relief valve or anything like that.
I mean, it, it, I guess, just in defense of what we came up with, it wasn't an arbitrary decision. It was look, we looked at some other code provisions in other communities. And so I think, you know, that, but I think it's, you always need test cases. Unfortunately for this applicant, they are the test case. But we'll go back and relook at that. And I think, yeah, I, I like Michelle's approach. Let's see if we can't resolve it through a landscape plan, a revised landscape plan. And then if not, we'll look at some other relief, maybe a variance, as, as he suggested.
Yeah.
Look at this one too, there's a 20, 25 foot setback. And that's not typical. I mean, there's certain areas it would be, but that adds a lot of extra square footage.
Yeah.
In addition to the, you know, obviously the extra length of the lot, but 25 foot is, nor is normal 20 basically. So that's adding a substantial amount there with that square footage. You may not see on normal lots.
Yeah.
Because if it's a setback of commercial, you're not gonna have a 20 foot setback. You're gonna have right there.
Yeah, right.
So it might have to be something to look at the residential zones within that.
Okay, so did we have a motion already on the floor? I can't remember.
Yeah, we did, we did, but it, it didn't address.
We, yeah. So.
I'll, I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay. So going forward, it sounds like.
I was gonna just ask, sorry, Fallon, I was just gonna ask Bill if he's comfortable, if they approve it with a condition to see if we can't find a way to make the landscaping work within the existing code. And if not, then we'll pursue other avenues. If they, if they want to pursue other avenues of relief, if it makes sense.
So like a conditional approval?
Yeah, well, it'd be based on, yeah, that it's contingent on a condition of approval of a revised landscaping plan.
You mean, I like the great agreement by both parties, you mean?
Yeah, right. If it's, if it works for the applicant and it works for the city code.
Yeah, I, I think that's good because then that gives, you know, the applicant an opportunity to, to say, well, you know, it still seems a little too much or whatever. And, and I think that the intention here for everybody, it's a good intention. And, you know, in all likelihood, it'll work out fine. But I think it's fair to give the applicant an opportunity to, to say, that's just not what, I, I just still don't feel right. You know, so.
Yeah, and I think, I think what Michelle wants to do is find the path of least resistance here. And, and we're sort of serving two masters in this case. We've got what appears to be some pretty rigorous requirements on this lot. And in the one hand, we, we can't ignore our ordinances. And on the other hand, I mean, there's got to be some room for reasonableness. And so I, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with that approach, just understanding that this one may have to come back.
Well, there's a, this is Commissioner Clements. So, so with the current ordinance of a, a tree every, basically 10 by 10 or 100 square feet. If you look at the frontage on this, let's round it up to 300. If you define that frontage as a 10 by 10, instead of a 10 by whatever it is, because of its width, you accomplish the goal of a tree every 10 feet, be it staggered or symmetrical. So you're actually complying with the code if you define the frontage as, as no wider than 10 feet in width. You, you see what I mean by, by the tree count for screening purposes? The math works.
So that's lineal. Yeah, yeah, so again, I don't know that we want to try to do this on the fly. I think if the applicant wants to keep moving forward, if we can get to a reasonable landscaping plan that meets the code and meets the applicant's desires, then I think, like I said, there's, I think that we probably need to spend a little bit more time on this and not necessarily do it on the fly. That's my concern, or get prescriptive about a code we don't have yet. But I, I think that staff's hearing the commission's desires, and I'm hearing the applicant's desires. And I'm also knowing that we need to look at the code and make sure that it's legally defensible and that we're applying the code according to what it says, so.
Because if not, every time this standard comes up, you're gonna be dealing with what aboutism.
Yeah, and, and we can't just make, like make up standards for every project, so.
The code doesn't have anything defining residential zones versus commercial zone. It just says period.
Scenic route.
Seen anything scenic route, period, okay.
So if, if we could make a motion to make a, a, a conditional approval based on the applicant providing a new landscape plan to be reviewed by the city, and upon agreement, you know, then it's, then it's approved. If the applicant is not, can't reach an agreement with the city, then the applicant would have the recourse to come before the commission again?
Seek a variance.
Seek a variance.
But the idea is that, you know, we're hopeful that staff and the applicant can work together to find a plan that works under the code and also for them. Michelle, am I putting words in your mouth that?
No, I think, I think that summarizes it.
Okay, so, um, the, the motion needs to, do we need to say conditionally approve or approve scenic route 2101 with the condition of landscaping, et cetera?
I think, I have something. I'd make a motion to approve scenic route 21-01, subject to staff and the applicant coming to an agreement on the landscaping plan to, that both parties are acceptable, or acceptable with.
So we've got draft findings and conclusions. And I suppose that you'd be instructing staff to make findings and conclusions that are consistent with that motion?
Right.
Yes. Yeah, with the amended motion, but yeah, we accept the current ones with the amendment of the landscaping plan.
Michelle and Diane, can you work with that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. It is moved and seconded to approve scenic route 2101 with the conditions as amended? Or how, yeah. Rachel.
Upon the condition that the city and the applicant are able to arrive at an agreement upon a landscaping plan.
Thank you.
Perfectly afforded. Thanks, Phil.
I need to have like a list of these, like these little notes, go tos. Okay. Fail. All right, moving on.
Did you, did you take a vote?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay, do you want to vote?
No, I think, I, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, um, so on that motion for scenic route 2101, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay. All right, our last item is subdivision 2101. All right, our last item is subdivision 2101, preliminary plat at 200 Rio Vista Boulevard, Evergreen Vista. Dominic?
Chair Faraday and members of the commission, I spoke with the applicant late this afternoon, and they would like this item continued to April 6. They probably are not going to go forward with the way it's been submitted, so it'll probably be revised if it does come before you again.
And if it is a new application, just a clarification from Bill, do we need to renotice it? Probably.
That's a great question. So, do we know, like, are they going to be making significant material changes to the application?
They would probably withdraw the application, I would, I suspect. But we need, we need some conversations between you and staff as well as their attorney, I think, to move forward.
Terrific. Yeah, I think if it's going to be a new application, probably need a new notice.
I would think so. That's going to change.
But in the time being, we'll just continue it? That's the request? Okay, perfect. Sorry to get in between that whole thing.
Okay, so can I get a motion to continue?
So moved. Commissioner Tunnel?
Is there second? Was that Commissioner Clements that seconded?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you. Okay, it has been moved and seconded to continue subdivision 2101 to our April 6 meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion passed. Michelle or Diane, any other items?
We just have the right, new Rite Aid signs that Morgan approved. They apparently have a new logo and new color scheme, so they're replacing that with all of their existing signs, which are located here on this map. I didn't realize they had some pieces.
I didn't realize either.
But there you can see that, here's the old sign in the top, the white lettering, and here's this new blue and green lettering. It's a little bit, spatially, at least on the face of the building, it's a little bit more spread out than it was before.
It looks nicer.
Yeah, but it's much more obvious. Here's a picture of the drive-through, the existing and the proposed, which is a little bit more diminutive. And there it is on the signboard on the street.
Okay.
No. That's, as far as I can tell, that's the only one that's been proved so far that you haven't seen.
The list has Alpine hot tubs?
I, we're not sure.
We don't think that they got it in before Morgan
Yeah.
left. As far as we know.
Yeah.
Yeah, so far. We're trying to figure something out. Well, if there's anything else, we'll bring it to your next meeting.
Okay, perfect. Unless there's any other discussion, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion we adjourn.
Second, Tunnel?
Seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Have you ever had a motion to adjourn not pass?
No.
I don't know why not done.